I would like to call this meeting to order at the Lemonster School Committee on Monday, June 5th, here at Apple Seeds. It's a regular meeting. Could everyone please stand and salute the flag, which is behind me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this time, we'll open up the public forum. Would anybody wish to speak? Please come up to the microphone. Oh, we got a list. Excellent. Please state your name and address, and please limit your comments to two minutes. We have Tom.
Tom Kanakia, 315 Jocelyn Street in Lemonster. Good evening. I would like to pose a scenario to the mayor with a few questions regarding the city's fiscal year 16 budgeting process. What if the city council received your budget earlier instead of a few days prior to the deadline so they could thoroughly review and discuss it? What if the city budget included a capital project plan with expenses instead of just a list of capital projects? What if the city used accurate estimated tax receipts in the formulation of the city budget, thereby not requiring a property tax increase? What if Lemonster was not ranked by the DOR as having the 30th highest property tax rate in the state out of all 353 cities and towns? What if the spent-to-date reports on closeout day of the fiscal year did not show excessive amounts of taxpayer money left over in department budgets totaling $6.9 million for fiscal year 16 alone and $19.4 million from fiscal year 14 to the present? What if the taxpayer money remaining in department budgets going into free cash for FY16 was not 14.7% of the total property tax levy collected but more in line with the state average of 5.5%? What if the taxpayer money in free cash was not allocated to the stabilization account, our rainy day fund, which as of today stands at $14 million? What if our current stabilization fund amount of $14 million was not the 13th highest total in the state out of the 321 cities reporting? What if the amount of money with which you exceeded net school spending for FY16 was not 1/10 of 1%, or just $59,569? What if Lemonster schools were not ranked by DESI's Office of School Finance as the 9th lowest funded district in the state out of the 261 non-regional vocational school districts for FY16? What if chargebacks, the cost the school department has to pay back to the city for overhead expenses, $6.4 million for FY16 alone, were not added to the school department's budget and used to reach net school spending requirements? What if the chargeback amount for school employee benefits did not increase from $1.8 million in FY11 to $2.6 million in FY16, a 45% increase at a rate of 9% per year? What if the city did provide justification for this increase, which it did not, as referenced in the auditor's findings every year? The $800,000 increase makes up a significant part of every year's net school spending compliance. What if a factual conversation centered around active participants like those here tonight instead of Facebook friend bubbles? As Benjamin Franklin said, "Trickery and treason are the practice of fools who don't have it in them to tell the truth." What if those energetic and talented teachers, deans, parish tutors, secretaries, and custodians who receive their pink slips and who were committed to a career in Lemonster don't come back? What if the comprehensive DOR review had been requested by you, the mayor, in 2011 at the suggestion of former city councillor David Rollins after the Massachusetts Department of School Business Officers identified inefficiencies and waste in City Hall's working relationship with the school department, particularly in the areas of payroll and purchasing? Mr. Mayor, your city budget practice is the source of the problem. I am asking you to request a DOR review of the city's budgeting process, and I ask those here tonight to request the same, a DOR review from the mayor. This comprehensive review of budgeting procedures and finances is the only way to bring transparency and accountability to a flawed budgeting practice. Mr. Mayor, let's establish our citywide priorities. Education is an investment in the overall well-being of our city. Only a DOR review can prevent you from treating it like a temporary purchase. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Michael's next.
Michael Stassen, 893 Main Street. I'll keep this short. I think I'm just a little disappointed that we talk so much about cutting things before we actually know what our funding is. I think our job should be tonight to pass a budget that requests what you actually need. The deficit doesn't exist until the city fails to fund your request. That's when you should be talking about what to do. If you ask for what you need, then we can lobby the mayor and the city to provide it. If you don't, then it's on you. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to come up and make a public comment? One more time, would anybody please come up?
Joshua Anderson, 19 Osmond Avenue. I am a public school student at Francis Drake Elementary, and I have been on to school meetings recently, seeing people talk about having teachers and LCE, and it's actually kind of scary to hear that because I want to go to LCE. It sounds like an amazing opportunity for those who can't get the help they need at the high school, but taking them to the high schools, like stopping all of that support and everything they need and the main reason they went to LCE instead of just any other high school. Owning at a district would probably be better instead of going to high school if they really need to go to LCE. And teachers is even worse, as the schools have the best teachers, I think they have, in almost all of Lemonster's history, and to see them threatened to lose a job is like threatening the mayor himself to be forced to step down from his position. And the schools really do need the funding and the teachers and LCE itself more than it does need. I don't even know an example. It's just the base thing of all, to have the teachers we need and the support we need. But I don't really know what to say now. Thank you.
Great. Nice job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to make us comment at the public forum? One last time, anybody would like to make a comment at the public forum? At this point, the public forum is closed. Superintendent Communications?
There are no communications this evening through the chair.
Okay. Then we'll move right on to the superintendent's report.
Yeah, just in summary, we had a great graduation on Saturday, so many of you who attended, we appreciate your attendance, and started off with sunny skies and ended with cloudy skies, but that by no means meant the tenor of the graduates. They were excited and ready to move on to their next pathways in life. So we appreciate all the work of the Lemonster High School, Center for Technical Education Innovation, and Lemonster Center for Excellence, all the administrative staff who really put the graduation ceremony together. Great work, and we were very successful getting it in and out before weather came in in the afternoon. Other than that, we're down to three weeks of the school year. School committee has an agenda item in front of them this evening to vote the last day of the school year, and whether that will be a half-day or not. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you very much. So we're going to move right on to the presentations around the budget. Nona?
I'd like to request that we move the approval of the last day of school up so then we can spend the rest of the time discussing the budget.
Certainly. Do I have a second for that? All those in favor? Okay, so, Nona?
Right, yeah. The last day of school is scheduled right now for Friday, June 23rd, and the recommendation that the administration has is to approve that day as well as to vote the last day as a one-half day for students. So I'll let the committee take it from there.
I'll make a motion that we accept that suggestion to move to a half-day on June 23rd for students.
Do I have a second? Any discussion, comment? All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Excellent. So at this point, we'll move on to the budget discussion.
All right. Through the chair, what we did after the Tuesday meeting of last week, we had a conversation with the Chair of Finance, ultimately worked during the remaining days of last, excuse me, of last week towards the development of three different budget options, as well as if the committee chooses to either add or subtract from the various options that were provided. And I kind of presented all the detail to you in the executive summary that went out last evening. Glenn, if you want to come up and just walk through the options and the numbers for the committee, that way we can understand the three options. The way that we presented them was primarily Option A, which is a level service budget, and that essentially pretty much brings us to the point of where we essentially should be entering FY18 with full salary, full expense, et cetera. Option B was the net school spending budget that we've been talking about now for about three, three and a half weeks. And Option C is really a priority budget, which takes into account the net school spending budget and adds various priority items. So I'll turn it over to Glenn, School Business Administrator, to walk through the handouts that we put together and sent over the weekend, as well as a couple of summary documents that we thought would be easier for you to understand. So Glenn?
I'd like to focus on the documents that were presented tonight. It's the three-page summary. And if you have any questions about the material sent out on Friday, I can answer them now or during the discussion. First, I want to point out that the top page represents a summary of the net school spending requirement and three budget scenarios that the superintendent mentioned. The required net school spending requirement for FY18 is $71,816,847. That was the budget in his original proposal under House Bill 1 in January, the same number that has been approved by both the House and the Senate. So it's likely that that will be the number when they finally come to some resolution of the state budget for next year. You add to that revenue source $2.1 million in anticipated school choice. The superintendent has some numbers, but in effect, we've seen a big switch this year in projected school choice. So would anyone want to explain what that switches, Matt?
Yeah, essentially, the school choice during the period of FY11 through FY17, the highest point we had was we were taking in about 238 students, FTEs in FY13, and we had an enrollment trend of sending out over 350 FTEs in Lemonster. And in FY17, which I think Gina had reported in mid-year, we have, we're taking in 295 students and we're only sending out 281 FTEs. So we've totally reversed the trends as to where we need to go, and that's really what is bringing in the additional school choice income. So that's why we factored that number in, and we'll continue on with the discussion.
The next number is a subtraction. We call it city chargebacks, and it's city expenses on behalf of the school department. That information was provided over the weekend. It basically represents the money the city charges us for administrative services, to collect taxes, to process payroll, et cetera. DPW services to plow the schools, school resource officers in the schools, non-employee insurances, the actual tuition payments made by the city of Lemonster under the cherry sheet for non-resident students attending either school choice or charter schools. And the biggest one is employee retirement contribution, which one of the members of the public spoke about earlier. That number this year is $6.4 million, but given the anticipated switch and reduction in the number of students attending both charter schools and school choicing out, we anticipate that number down to about $6 million. So that's taken off. That's an expense. That's a net school spending eligible expense. Then we put back in as a school department chargeback to the city for the crossing guards. It's one of those areas where the school gives us the money, but it's not considered a net school spending expense, so we charge it back to the city. So the funds available for the school operating budget in FY18 are $67,947,847. Yes?
I just have a question about, excuse me, about the chargebacks. Are we able, as the school committee, to request from the mayor to provide us with the actual FY17 city chargebacks? I mean, sooner rather than later, obviously, so that we can see if there's any available funds that we can offset the net school spending expenses? I mean, do we, as a school committee, say something that we have to put a motion forward so that we can get that information?
Yes, we would have to ask the mayor to give us that information.
Then I'd like to make a motion to request that the mayor provide the actual FY17 charges for city chargebacks to us as soon as possible, so then we can determine if there are any available funds to offset our current net school spending expenses.
A second. Any discussion?
I am all for it. I just don't know if we want to kind of batch all of our motions, because I think we're probably going to have a bunch of different stuff tonight. So I'm not saying we don't vote on this one, but maybe-
I think I'd rather just keep voting. I mean, I think I'd rather just do that because I don't want anything to get misconstrued.
Or lost?
Or lost, exactly. Please.
Any other discussion?
No, I agree.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries?
I'm staying because I don't know what's multiple.
Okay.
Thank you.
It was to get a current list of chargebacks from the mayor for this fiscal year to see if there's any additional money that could be used towards net school spending.
Any other questions? I'll go on.
Nope.
So the level service budget represents what we're currently spending, and all current employees moved into next year. If you look at the third page of the document that was passed out, it shows the FY18 general fund salary budgets. Title is "With Three Scenarios." First column is the FY16 actuals, and the second column is FY17 projected expenses. It's slightly different than the numbers that were in the budget, but this is where I anticipate -- excuse me, I anticipate we'll end the year. So I project that we'll end this year with total salary expenses of $47,428,000. Scenario A simply rolls up the negotiated salary increases of 2%, the step increases, and the lane changes, and approximately 2% for contract employees. So the total difference between current year's proposal, projection and next year's proposal is $2,047,000. It's the line below the spreadsheet. That's a number that the finance committee asked for, and we have discussed in previous meetings. A little over $2 million. So if we were to go approve a level services budget, you would need that amount, because the city approves two lines, salaries and expenses. You roll back to the second page, and it shows-
So I just wanted to clarify for those who don't have it. So that, at this point, includes all staff without any reduction in staff, including custodians, teachers, secretarial staff, everything?
Correct. It's an all-in, level service, no new hires budget.
Thank you.
And Glenn, the only other edification on all of these three budgets is the fact that we've done what the committee has asked us to do and set aside transportation. We're looking, we're concentrating primarily on salary and expense in the school department, setting aside transportation as a totally separate item.
Do we have a transportation sheet, though?
Well, I thought it was in here.
No.
There was one in here in the back end. There was something-
It was. I believe that was showing current year anticipated expenses.
Oh, that's the current year with the deficit of $7.27.
And the anticipated transportation, correct me if I'm wrong, Glenn, but we went over this earlier, is $5,050,000 is what we're anticipating spending in FY18, but we also have the consultants working on that.
That's level services, all current bus runs, current bus stops, and out-of-district routes. And we are, I am confident that we'll be able to reduce that projected amount, as I've said at the last meeting. I anticipate that we'll spend approximately what we're spending this year.
So what I don't know about procedure, but I think when we vote on a budget, we need to vote on the transportation piece also?
Yes, we do.
As a separate?
As a separate. We give the mayor three line items. So I think what we'd need to see would just be, again, the total minus the anticipated or rolled-over number from the city minus the Medicaid, and to show whatever the deficit would be, to make sure that they know what that deficit would be. What?
Well, I think we would be voting on a total amount, but then you want it broken up. Is that what you're suggesting?
I think we need to vote on the total amount, whatever that is, that we decide if we take the -- Glenn, would you want to include the cuts before or no?
It's up to you. We're providing you our best guess, projection of next year. The actual contracts call for $5.1 million. We really can save $230,000 or so in negotiations with the vendors based on the initial discussions with the consultants that are paid for by a grant.
So I defer to whatever your judgment is, but for us to vote on that, I think we need to be able to show what the total is, and then we know we're getting so much revenue to offset that, and then we need to show what the deficit would be, that if the city doesn't fund it, to make sure we have a balanced budget, we need to do something about that.
What revenue are we using?
School choice is the only.
No, no. The city, if we use a rolled-over number, because we don't know that number yet from last year, the 3.264, whatever it is, and the 8-
It was actual, the actual was 4.8.
No, the city gave us 3.2 something, and then the 850, I think. Is that the number, Glenn, that we anticipate?
860 this year.
So you're going to take those two numbers, add them up, and then subtract it from the 5.050.
Did you want to include this as well, the estimated user fees?
I don't think we've decided about user fees yet, so probably not. So it would be showing a deficit.
But wouldn't, if we just voted for the whole amount, let's just say we just voted for the $5 million, if we got Medicaid, I mean, it doesn't go to us anyways, right? So it would just go back to the city.
No, it's been committed to us already.
But which means they would offset their output, because they would get that 860 to include in it. So if that $5 million would go down-
Right. I think it's tomato, tomato, really.
So if we say that we're expecting $5 million, but then the Medicaid money comes in, then instead of $5 million, they're giving us the 860 from Medicaid and then the difference, and then if there's any other-
So what number would you show us what our deficit is?
Well, we would hope that we wouldn't have a deficit, correct? We're asking them to fund it fully.
Right.
If we know right now we've got $4 million, $4.1 million, and we know we have a contract for 5.050, we don't have the ability to cover that.
We shouldn't. It's the city's responsibility.
But we signed the contract. We need to show that there's a deficit. We need to -- that's where we apparently failed. This year, we only asked for, even though I don't think we asked for anything-
We didn't.
3.2. No, I know. I'm saying that.
I know, but I think that needs to be corrected, because that amount for transportation has primarily been a fixed amount as long as I've been around, and it's been 3.2 for many years. So that's primarily what the amount is.
And I'm going to be honest, I really don't think that we should be using school choice to pay for transportation.
We don't have school choice to use to pay for it, so it doesn't matter, because it's going to cover our deficit, I'm assuming. So we don't even have the ability to do it. But I think it is our responsibility, I'm not saying to pay for it, but it's our responsibility to show that we currently have a million-dollar deficit in transportation minus whatever we decide that we can cut, because people need to know that. I mean, the city would, needs to know what they need to come up with to cover that.
But wouldn't they need to know that they need to come up with the $5 million, just round it off to $5 million, and it might be a little less or whatever, or a little bit more? And so they need to come up with that, and they're budgeting it so much, they're counting on Medicaid.
We can present it any way we want. I think it's in our best interest to show what the deficit is, even if it's not our deficit to cover. So they know how much more money they need to find in their budget to cover it. But that's just my opinion. I definitely don't want to debate this.
So 5.1 minus-
I would use $5,050,000.
$5,050,000 minus 3.2, which is what they've traditionally given us, and there we go.
And if they want to use Medicaid, it's $800,000, so it's about a million, $1,050,000.
And that's all I'm saying.
I understand that, but I just don't want that to hinder us from voting for it tonight, because we have to go back and figure out a number, because we can just figure it out right here.
I don't want anything to, and I think that's a separate vote, to be honest with you. So we don't have, that won't hold up our other-
To the chair?
Hold on one second.
Hold on. We're stood, and then I'll call you.
The general fund vote. I'm just saying, I think that we need a piece of paper so we can, you know, have a documented thing to show it.
I understand what you mean. Thank you. Ron, and then Wendy.
I think the subject is moot. One, I would like to have Kristin repeat everything, what has been said, and two, let's vote on it and get it over with. No more dawdling.
Well, we're not at that point yet. We need to finish going through, but we do need to vote on it at some point. We're not ready to vote right now.
Because I think everything is becoming just too extra, too extrahistical. Everything is getting lost in the shaft, and I just, let's get it done.
Wendy, then, Glenn?
All I was going to say was that I think that if we say this is what our transportation cost is we're looking at before any of the savings that we can put into place from the task force that was helping and the consultants that came in. If they don't realize any savings, then this is what our transportation cost will be. I think from that point, it's pretty clear that anything up to that not covered would be our deficit. I mean, we don't have to spell it out. If we say we need $5 million, you give us $3 million, then we have a $2 million deficit. If you give, you know, if we say we need $5 million, you give us $5 million, we have no deficit. So, you know, but with the understanding that we are still working to cut costs and streamline and fix this where we can.
Glenn?
This may not mean appropriate, but based on the discussion you just had and Mr. Hill's recommendation, if you had a motion to approve a transportation appropriation of $5,050,000 less anticipated Medicaid reimbursement to be accepted by the city of $800,000, you have a number of $4,250,000 net. You could include the anticipated revenue that the city will get as part of your motion, but you're actually asking for $5,050,000.
I mean, I would just like to make that recommendation, that the school committee request that the mayor and the city make a commitment to fully fund the FY18 transportation budget, and then whatever we can do to offset it through us working to reduce costs on it, so be it.
Go ahead.
I'll second.
No, we need to make that motion.
I thought she just did.
Oh, I did.
That was what she just did.
So, Nona, can you, because I thought you were just making a suggestion, and I didn't know that you said I wanted to make a motion. So I apologize. But can you say it again to clarify it, and is there a way to incorporate the subdivision that Kristin has requested, like make the motion for the overall and then make bullet points for the other piece of it?
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the school committee request the mayor and the city council to make a commitment to fully fund the FY18 transportation expenses minus what we can- minus what we can...
So, why don't we say an amount, which would be 5 million, fifty thousand?
505, 5 million, fifty thousand dollars, minus any Medicaid that we can generate back to the city, minus any savings that we can come up with on what the task force has worked on. That's my motion.
I'll second it.
Discussion? Sue?
I'd like a number.
Glenn, what's, can you give that again?
In terms of, you know, saying any savings. You know, I've heard us say that we're going to save X amount if we eliminate so many bus stops. What is it, Kristin? What was the amount? I mean, I think we need to, to make a sincere effort to give a dollar amount, and certainly, the five million, we're hoping is not going to be our expense next year.
Correct.
So, I, I think if we're approving a budget, that we should come up with a number and say...
And I think we should have a piece of paper with this.
So, the only firm numbers that we have right now are 5 million, fifty thousand, and the, 800,000 for the Medicaid. So, that you said that was 4 million, 250,000. Those are the only firm numbers. Now, obviously, we still will be trying to come up with additional, but we're looking at a minimum need of 4.2 and change. Those are the only, I mean, the other numbers, until things go into place, we don't know what that'll be. So, if, if you're looking for more concrete numbers, the one we have is what we need and the Medicaid money.
And you really don't know until the start of school next year, how many kids you're going to need to transport.
Well, I thought this committee was not going to support the level, the funding level that we have today. I, that was my understanding.
Yes.
Right up front, was that we can no longer continue to support transportation at the level we funded. So, in my mind, there's got to be a number out there that's going to be saved, because we're not going to be transporting the students that live in excess of, under a mile and a half. I've heard talk about the high school, we talked about the stops. So, I, I mean, I guess, in talking to city councilors, you know, it's good for us to go and ask for numbers, for amounts, but we need to be accountable to them as well, and we're getting pushed back. You know, it's very easy to sit around the table and say, "I want 5 million dollars" from the city council, and, you know, well, what are you doing to, to reduce that? I mean, I think if, if we, as a committee, come up with a number and say, "Hey, you know, 4 million or something," I think it's more realistic, but...
Heather?
The fact is, we're sitting here tonight, and we have tonight and tomorrow night to vote.
I agree.
So, I mean, you know, this is conversations that have been, should have been happening months ago.
And absolutely, absolutely. No question on that.
Shame on us, right. Kristin? I think Glenn used a, a num, the same number from this current year for next year, that you're trying to get to that savings.
It's, right now, I believe the number you have in front of you is 4 million, 850,000 or so.
So, we can use that number as, as an anticipated savings of almost 200, I think?
235,000.
So, my only...
That could be our target.
Right, and I think that's a very good target. I guess what I'm concerned with is, although we didn't specifically ask for amount last year, amount was sort of given to us, and then, it was not the correct amount, so we needed to ask for more money. So, I don't want to be in a position of asking for more money. It's very easy to say, "Hey, we don't need this." It's a lot harder to say, "Please give us more."
Right.
So, that's my, I guess, concern.
So, I'd say I think we're a lot closer than, you know, we're within a, the worst-case scenario, a couple hundred thousand dollars, as opposed to a million off. And I think it's disingenuous of this committee to not try our best to reduce costs everywhere, because if we want more for net school spending, we should be trying to be reducing it in other places.
And I agree with that.
And that's just my feeling.
I agree with that. I think we ought to do all weekend.
Right, so that's why I just said, let's, Glenn recommended using the number for this year for next year, and, and that would be the reductions that we would aim for.
I'm not, no, but I'm not voting for 3.2.
No, 4.876. It, the, it's the four point, it's the 4876413. That's, that's the number.
And with the understanding, if I may, that the city council has your permission, although they don't need it, to utilize Medicaid reimbursement funds to offset that amount.
Right.
I think that's been committed to us.
Right, so that brings it down to, to about 4 million, and just over 4 million, if they use the Medicaid money.
And that would show about an 800,000 increase that we need.
Yes.
I still think we need it on a piece of paper, though, too, and I'm not saying that we can't vote on it tonight, but we just need to get that piece of paper, that's all.
So, you want something in writing to be sent down to the city council?
Well, we would do that anyway.
Right, I mean, that's part of when we present the budget.
We're voting on, on a budget, so, you know, we should have a budget in writing.
Right, but one always gets presented to the mayor, and...
Three, see, we used to have the transportation rolled into our expense budget, and we pulled it out.
Which makes more sense.
Right, so I just think it's a separate, separate thing.
So, so basically, you just want that added when we see the final printout?
We would need to amend the, if we're putting down a different number and voting on something, we need to amend the, the motion.
Do you want to amend your motion?
Or you could reject, retract your motion?
Yeah.
Don't, don't, Nona, not me.
I'll amend my motion to go from 5 million to 4 million, 876,413.
Or would it be wise to say, you know, are we, the costs are, at this time, 5 million, 50,000?
Yeah.
Less Medicaid, less an anticipated savings of...
230.
And then, end up with the final one, so that they can see the thought process?
I agree with you. Make a living document. You don't have to keep on going back and...
And I guess that's what I was trying to say about having the document that showed the flow. I still think we need to ask for a number, though, so if, I mean, if Nona wants to keep the 5 million, fifty, that's fine, or the 48, but I, we can't have a, we can't vote on a living document. We need to vote on a number, so it can be either one.
I know, but the numbers can be a living document.
This is my suggestion.
800,000, less about...
4 million, 250,000.
To the chair.
Ron?
If, if Nona keeps it 5.5, it gives us some breathing room.
Well, I think what the majority of the committee is feeling is that we need to really be showing the mayor and the city council that we're trying to work with them in cutting expenses and working with transportation to be a little bit more realistic in our funding requests.
But, you know, I feel like, I feel like, I feel like, does anybody remember the Titanic? When they were building it, the committee decided to cut back on the usage of boats. When the day came, it went to sink, and they didn't have enough boats. So, tell me, break out, who's going to be here, who's going to sit and say, "Well, we didn't, we figured, we didn't, we, we cut back using the proverbial boat."
All of us will.
Yeah. Is that what you want to be? Is that, is that the way you want us to look like?
The, the, I'm sorry, the wording. The, what were they, the consultants that came in have identified places, real places, that we can save. So, it is, we're, if we're going to later ask for anything over the bare minimum, then we need to show that we're not just asking for the most we can ask for, that we are reasonably trying to cut expenses where we can. And this is an area, we have already identified some real opportunities to save through the bringing in of those consultants. So, saying that this is our expenses, minus the Medicaid, minus these identified, what we're projecting we're going to be able to cut, leaves us asking for this, then, Nona has the numbers, that shows that we are trying to ask for really just what we need and not more because we can. So, I think it's a reasonable thing to say that this is the number we're looking for, and we're not going to leave anybody sinking on a ship.
So, let's call the question. Nona, can you please repeat what your amended motion would be?
That the school committee requests the mayor and the city council to make a commitment to fully fund the FY18 transportation expenses at 4 million dollars.
Is that, that wasn't the right amount?
That's less, that's less the Medicaid and less the savings.
What is the amount?
It's 4.2.
4.876.
Was it 4.2?
Yeah.
This year's projection is 4 million, 876,000 dollars.
So, essentially, it boils down to, if you ask for 4 million, they usually commit 3.2. That would leave 800,000 that they would have to ultimately...
So, we're asking for the 4.8?
If I may, if the motion is 4 million, 876,000 dollars, with the understanding that the city will be able to maintain other funds received on behalf of the schools, including Medicaid reimbursement funds, and this little pot of money called McKinney-Vento reimbursement of 50, 60,000 that they don't provide to us anyway. That would offset, bring it down to about 4 million dollars. The actual request would be for 4 million, 876,000 dollars, which represents what we project to be this year, and we'll find a way to save the anticipated 235,000 dollar cost increase.
Okay. So, do we need a second?
So, we need a second? Whoever seconded?
I'll second it. I'll second it again.
Discussion?
Okay, so, I know I got here late, but did the city council commit to our deficit this year of 745,000?
We, we made a motion to request, did we, was...
We didn't make it.
Oh, well, yeah.
So, we're requesting next year's transportation, but we haven't decided how we're going to pay for this year, this current year's transportation.
It's just kind of how the conversation, it's kind of how the conversation went, but it is on the list of questions.
Yeah, that'll...
And I guess, Wendy, you alluded to, you got the results of the, the transportation...
No, I did not. I, Glenn said that there was, that, that they, I, I was just repeating what was said, that they identified, he's estimating two...
Two members of the school committee met with the transportation consultants. They can opine on what they heard. What I've talked to the superintendent about is doing everything we can to cap the budget next year at what we're spending this year, whether it's organizing routes, whether it's eliminating one or two buses. The superintendent had made a recommendation, I believe, to eliminate one big bus, one small bus, and 10% or 5% of the out-of-district. That represented 235,000 dollar cut.
Yeah, originally, on the reduction, it was 273,512, but...
We, we do not have, so we do not have the proposals, even the draft recommendations from the consultants. They're still working on those proposals.
Any other further discussion? To the chair.
Just to clarify, what is the exact number that we are voting on in this motion?
4.876.
Okay, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
And Kristin, was this the number that you were anticipating voting on?
I think that it's a number that shows in good faith that we're trying to trim, and we need them to fund transportation. So, I just wanted to show we're dealing with, you know, originally, the number that's built in here was, was part of the 5 million-dollar deficit, so I'm just trying to pull it out and show what it is, and, you know, make sure everyone knows where we're getting all the numbers from. And, and that's how I started the conversation, just by listing it all, so...
But, I mean, that's something that they can do for us after the fact, right? I mean, just so that we have it on a piece of paper. We all understand what it is, what we're talking about.
The number is in the, the bill's given out, you know, Friday.
It's this one.
I just prefer, I mean, I don't want to vote, I'm just saying I'd prefer to have the piece of paper with everything written in front of us, so we know what we're voting on, without doing this, but yes.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed. All right, sorry, Glenn, can you continue?
Sure. So, the budget proposal scenario is A, B, and C you have in front of you. We're telling what level service is budget, not including transportation. We have the FY17 revised budget, FY16 and 17 revised budget projection, and under scenario A, level service, the increase would go from 21, expenses would go from 21,194,000 to 22,647,000, an increase of 1,453,000. Please recognize that these numbers include the 6% that we were told by the mayor and comptroller. We're on page two, sir.
Glenn?
Yes.
Before you start, could you move it in light a little closer? I think people in the back are having a tough time hearing you. Thank you.
Okay. That the cost projections here include the 6% on cost increase for health insurance premiums, and the appropriation request for out-of-district tuition is net of circuit breaker funding. So, I'm not including the circuit breakers as revenue, that's something that comes to us anyway. So, the amount requested here is 1.6 million dollars or less than we actually anticipate spending next year. Just to keep it easy, just the, we actually asked for the appropriation, it's offset by a revenue source. So, the increased level fund, level service for next year is 1,453,000. So, if you go back to page one, it shows that the level service budget, you add the salaries and expenses, you come with a total of 72,122,000 dollars. The difference between that, 72,122, and the 67, 947 of funds available to the school operating budget after chargebacks, is a 4.2 million dollar increase, or 5.81%, which clearly is rich. But that's what it would take in order to level fund our current year's budget and our current year staff.
Excuse me, did you give out a total page? I have a separate page for salaries and a separate page for expenses.
And the front page is the total.
72, okay. So, the total, if I read this right, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Do we show for the level service, are there cuts made in here where we can trim, I don't know, different expenses in different ways, or this was a rollover completely?
This is a rollover. It's a level services budget. We do not anticipate, Kristin, that this would be funded or approved by the school committee.
Right, I'm just trying to see the difference between, you know, B and A and B, or whatever.
A is current year appropriation, level services rolled into next year, same personnel, same expenses with anticipated cost increases for health insurance and out-of-district tuition.
And are we, I, I know you just mentioned a circuit breaker. How were you factoring school choice revenue into any of this?
School choice revenue is referenced above on the very first page. School choice revenue is added to the net school spending requirement, because that's funds made available to the school department for eligible expenses.
But did you offset the 72 million by the school choice in, we anticipate that as revenue? We, we use that to balance our budget this year. Are you using it to balance our budget for next year?
Yeah, the second line here, 2.1 million dollars.
We anticipate the school choice next year being 2.1?
Yep. Based on current year, 1.7, anticipating next year, those students staying, we have 32 seniors that are current school choice that have graduated, we anticipate bringing in approximately 100 students, offset the reduction in our net school spending. We have 99, lost 99 students, we anticipate bringing them back in through school choice.
I thought that it assumed a balance this year. I apologize.
Okay. So, your level service budget represents a 5.81% increase over the current year's net school spending requirement. The next one is our best effort to meet the net school spending requirement. And let me preface this by saying, to do this, we came up with over 5 million dollars of cost reductions. Very painful, but it's something we had to come up with in good faith to make a recommendation to the city as directed by the mayor. Even doing that, we, it's very difficult to get to net school spending, because the total increase is 0.63% next year. And the fact that this year, we're, we're struggling with not only transportation expenses, but also out-of-district tuitions and retiree health insurance, two items which have historically been paid for with school choice revenue. So, we will end the year, this year, in deficit, both in transportation and in retiree health insurance. So, given that fact, we, the superintendent directed this cabinet, we came up with proposals that were presented on May 22nd. Those figures are included in your packet that was put out on Friday, and post... Those figures are included in your packet that was put out on Friday and posted on LPS's website. Last, every meeting now, we will post the materials on the LPS website, so people have a chance to review them in advance. So 22,647 is level service. The subtotal of reductions in expenses to meet the net school spending target is $1,172,000. Scenario B for salaries, which is the third page. Again, the presentation of May 22nd would present a reduction of $4,696,500 in salary reductions. Adding back salaries to reorganize and to provide adequate services to our students, 276,000, comes to $45,545,000. You add the net school spending expenses, the net school spending salaries on the first page, the summary of the net school spending budget, our best effort, totals $68,873,500. That's still $925,000 above the net school spending requirement. It represents a 1.29% above net school spending. If you add the .63, we're still under 2% budget increase. But that's as far as cuts as we could make in trying to present our responsible budget to the school committee.
And that's the budget that we've all been presented and talked about with all the cuts?
That's correct.
With all the cuts, we're still 1.29% above the net school spending requirement. Scenario C is the priority budget, that the superintendent and his cabinet have discussed since last week, in trying to put together a more responsible budget, with still recognizing the mayor's need to keep close to net school spending. So the priority budget, we'll start with page three, which is salaries. Scenario C, the bottom of the page, budget adjustments for this priority budget. We add back 14 teachers. Four at the elementary level, one each, two at the middle school, one each, five at Leamester High, and three at CTEI. So add 14 teachers, we're using the same numbers we used in the original presentations, costs about $700,000 in salaries. We're adding, we're proposing assistant, additional assistant principal at the high school, in lieu of the three deans that we're proposing for reduction. Estimated salary of $100,000. We're adding back all of the current athletic programs, not the additions that Lorene has requested, but we're level funding all athletics, which would add another $205,000 to the level service budget. And we're adding back the extracurricular stipends. Maintain the current funding level adds back $92,500. So in essence, budget scenario C, priority budget adds back $1,097,500 to the net school spending budget.
And this still, though, has some cuts in it?
Significant.
Being secretarial, custodian, and some teachers still.
Yes. We're bringing back $1,097,500 of about 4.5 million. Bringing back about a third, or less than that. Jumping over to expenses, under scenario C. Because we're bringing back 15 employees, we have to budget for 15 health insurances at $10,575 a person, which comes to $159,000. But we'll also be saving, because we won't have 15 potential people collecting unemployment insurance. So those savings are actually larger than the health insurance costs, because those only last for about half a year. So actually, we're gonna save money under the scenario C on expenses of $57,000. So the total expenses under scenario C are $23,762,000. We go back to the first page, you add up the budget for salaries, $46,152, the budget for expenses of $23,762. You come with the total budget proposal of $69,914,000 for school operating budget, net of city chargebacks. That's a difference of $1.966 million, or 2.74%.
And this also does not include the special ed teachers that have been requested?
All along, yes, correct. All along, we've worked to provide you a budget that did not add positions, given this dire financial situation. There are few positions that have been added, but those are due to reorganization, to offset obligations by positions that aren't being funded this year. It does not include an amount for special ed, which we all agree, I think we all agree, needs some sort of adjustment. So whatever you want to add of the 1.6, 1.7 million that has been requested of sped, would be added to this 2.74%.
Wendy?
So I think, as much as most of us would like to see us, something closer to the level service, I don't think that's a realistic expectation at this point, but I, B is not either. So I think the most realistic or the most promising of these, that maybe we can dig a little deeper, and if everybody wouldn't mind, is option C.
I think we need some more discussion, and I think-
Right.
-that I am interested in hearing a little bit more about the custodial outsourcing and what the actual savings are and things like that. Sue?
Can you explain, under scenario B, for adjustments to meet net school spending, is an increase in expenses instead of a decrease? I'm not sure I understand that. So level, level service, the expenses are less than net school spending expenses?
Yes.
I don't understand that. Can you just explain it? Maybe I missed-
Unemployment insurance. If we're laying off people that, four and a half million dollars of salaries, we've budgeted for 75% of those people to collect 36% of their salaries for unemployment.
Okay, so that's on the expense side, not the salaries?
Yes, that's on the expense side.
Okay, I did miss that.
Yeah, I think in our original, through the chair, on our original reduction sheet, we had estimated $1,160,650 in unemployment, so.
Just another comment. I appreciate these sheets, I wish we had these last year and prior years, because these were very helpful. But one comment, I really think, you know, in looking at comparative line items between 2016, 2017, 17% increase in school leadership building salaries. That's not acceptable. That wasn't acceptable, and I think it's incumbent on this committee to understand when you're presented with salary increases, that we know there's money in the budget. I know for a fact, one person got a $20,000 increase last year. That's irresponsible spending in my mind. We had 4.1% increase from 2016 to 2017 in classroom teachers, 12% increase in specialist teachers, which, that could be special ed, 10% increase in psychological services, again, that could be valid as well. But I think it's incumbent on us to make sure that we know what we're voting on when all these salary raises came before us during the year, contracts, et cetera. I think it's important that we have support to say, hey, it's in the budget or it's not in the budget. So I, like I said, 498,000 is school leadership building salaries.
Glenn?
I believe that was a discussion we had in the finance committee meeting. That was surprising to me when I first looked at it, again, I wasn't aware that happened. It was a reclassification of employees. That it's not just principals or assistant principal, it also includes support staff in the main office of the schools.
Right, but the point is, in order for us as a committee to make informed decisions, we could have used this document. And, you know, I think it's not acceptable. We were pushed off, for last year's budget, we were pushed off, saying, we have money sitting in this one line item, we haven't allocated the raises for the teachers or the raises for this. That's not acceptable. In order to present us with information to vote on, we should have all the information in front of us.
Which, just to clarify, is not Glenn's fault, because he wasn't here last year.
But I'm not blaming it.
No, 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 I just want to make-
Actually, I'm making a statement for the committee to be aware, and I know I have not supported some of the increases, but I know everyone else has. So I think it's incumbent on us to know what we're voting on, you know, informed decision-making.
I know at our last meeting, we had talked about going back to some of the unions to see if there was any way to negotiate other ways of saving money. Do we know if anything like that has either happened or is going to be set up?
There's been conversation through the chair, but no concrete results at this point.
Do you know if they're willing to sit down and talk, the different unions?
We've had conversation, but each of them have taken it under advisement and is either taking it to their members, or whatever the case may be.
But, because that would impact maybe some of our decision if we knew that-
Exactly.
...there was going to be some extra savings in various places.
And it could save positions-
Right.
...if we knew that. I think, time's running out for us.
So Wendy?
So because, so looking at the breakdown on scenario C, where we're adding back 14 teachers and assistant principals, but we're, and all of these four things that Glenn listed, what you said we weren't touching was the custodial and IT outsourcing. But we might be able to, if there was some wiggle room on the parts of the different unions, we might be able to not have to outsource. So it would be helpful to us to know where that was going, and if there was any hope in that they could, we could manage to not have to outsource.
You know, I'll go along with what Wendy said, but the other thing that stands out to me is adding an assistant principal. How can, how can we even think to add an assistant principal? And I know it's to replace the deans, but I think it's important to keep the deans. We need to keep those deans. It's a safety issue in the middle schools and at the high school.
But I wonder, is the, I mean, like historically, and up until we had small schools, we didn't have deans, we had an assistant principal. And people were safe, and there was not an issue. So I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, can safety still be maintained with a collaborative effort between the principal and vice principal? And, you know, what's the difference between how much money we're saving, eliminating those positions, but adding one position?
I think the workload that you have put on assistant principals to help in evaluating teachers at the various stages all through the year, they're not going to have the time to do a sufficient job of dealing with discipline, entering, you have to enter that discipline into the computers, which the deans do, because the state requires that now. I think it's, I think it's foolhardy to think of hiring an assistant principal and not replacing these deans. I think it's-
Any other comments? Wendy?
I just have a question, procedural. So if, and forgive me, because last year was my first time doing, being part of the budget process. If we looked at this number, this 2.74%, and then you had a chance to sit down with the unions and work things out, and we could, are we locked into these numbers as they're written, or if we are able to work out something where it is no longer necessary to outsource, we can change that, even though originally we thought we would have to? Like if you can work something out with the unions that brings the cost down closer to the outsourcing, are we free to do that?
I don't think that the gap that we're experiencing right now in savings for the outsourcing, I don't really think that you're going to be able to fulfill that, that gap, so.
But just procedurally, is that something that-
In general, we can always vote to move lines.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. So by vote, if we ended up voting, it doesn't close the door on continuing conversations?
Oh, no, it doesn't close the door on anything.
That's what I want to make sure that we're not-
It's just that through the chair, I think Nona's correct. You know, we're running out of time here, we need some guidelines, we need to ultimately get a budget for the mayor.
And that's why I asked, because if we passed a number, and then we, can we continue the negotiation process to try and save more positions, or decide where, you know, we're not locked, we're locked into a number, but not necessarily where we save.
The only, just through the chair, the only guideline that I remind you of constantly is the fact that we have to notify staff by June 15th, and I can't do it on June 14th. So we have to gear up and be ready to do that.
I just wanted to make sure we weren't-
But if we notify and we can resend that, if we find that we have money to-
Exactly, but the chance that you take with-
So they have other jobs.
Right.
Yes, exactly, you lose personnel.
Cody, then, Sue?
I just wanted to echo Nona's comments about the deans. You know, as someone who graduated six years ago, I want to say in the most blatant way possible that I do feel that we are putting student safety at risk by eliminating the dean positions. You know, they have an unbelievably difficult job, and also one that's extremely unique. And I can say with absolute confidence that their leadership in our high school has been above and beyond what we could ever ask. You know, in addition to the work they do with disciplinary issues and administrative issues, you know, they also form amazing and deep bonds with some of our most troubled children in the school. And, you know, just to sum it up, also going off of what Nona said, I am concerned that we are absolutely overflowing our vice principals with a job that they can't possibly be expected to do.
Sue?
I was trying to ask the administration what the logic was, or why you felt, because it is your, you know, you heard from your central leadership.
Yeah.
So if they supported this, I just want to hear it from you, how you would offset the concerns of the community of safety being an issue, eliminating the deans.
We already have a principal, well, actually, we have a principal of Leamester High School, two assistant principals, a principal over at Center for Technical Education Innovation, plus an assistant principal director of vocational technical services in the school. We just figured that having a campus-wide assistant principal that would focus on what Cody just said, the student relationships, the safety, et cetera, and that the work be equally distributed amongst that many FTEs of administration that you could effectively handle the campus.
And we still have resource officer in the school system as well?
Yeah, I think that's an issue for the school committee, because we have been reduced to school resource officers in the school department for the last year and a half, two years. I have a meeting scheduled with the police chief over the summer to continue to identify ways to rectify that. But if we had two resource officers, school resource officers at the high school, CTEI campus, as we have had in the past, I think that they add a tremendous value of resources that helps with the school safety, as well as liaisons with the courts on attendance issues, et cetera. So I think that that is pretty significant resources for a school campus of about 1,800 kids.
And are we still paying, because I know at one point, we were paying 12 months of their salary, and we have requested to pay only 10 months of their salary, since they don't work in the summer.
Yeah, well, we were-
Is that something that's happening?
Yeah, we were assured through the chair in previous discussions with the mayor that there would be adjustments for the staff that we lost, but we haven't, you know, that will be something that will probably fall out through the indirect charges at this point, so.
Wendy?
I'm sorry. So then you addressed the high school deans, what about the middle school deans?
Well, the, the way we handled the middle school deans is the fact that we added a position back to each of the middle schools, and that would be up to the principals of those schools to determine whether they wanted to add their resource officer back, or whether they wanted to take care of a teaching position. But that would be up to the building administration to make that decision. Same thing in the elementary schools, they don't have deans, they each have a principal, assistant principal. We are restoring, or we're recommending restoring, one position in each of the elementary schools, and once again, it would be up to the, up to the building principals to determine how to add that additional FTE back in their buildings, so.
So Wendy, then Heather?
So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding. So all of those people at the high school that you named and the addition of this, another assistant principal, the people already in those positions that you mentioned, the assistant principals and everything, have they given you feedback either directly or through Dr. Lord that they can take on this additional?
Well, Dr. Lord's in the audience, so I think he can speak for himself. We had a conversation about this at noon time today, so I don't want to speak for him.
Okay. So my question is, all of the people that the superintendent just said who are in your building, who would be picking up the work, the extra job responsibilities of the deans and this addition, have you gotten feedback from them that this is okay with them and there, there won't be a safety concern, as Cody said, and that they can handle this?
The, the proof will be in the pudding later on. I can't give you an absolute yes or no answer. The effectiveness of the current program with the three deans and the assistant principals is a very strong one. If we were to take away the deans and add one more assistant principal, we just discussed about this with the team, they're all willing to pick up the ball.
That's what, I wasn't asking if it would work, if they were willing to try it.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to be as effective, but they did say they'd be willing to pick up that extra work.
That's what I was asking, if they were willing, okay.
Yep.
That was my question. Thanks.
Heather?
So I just have a question going back to the school resource officers. So in our chargebacks, I believe it's like a hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year, and I think it's been pretty steady.
Yes, that's been consistent.
Very consistent.
For a long period of time, yes.
And so we have two now, and let's just say, three years ago, how many did we have?
Well, we had two at the high school and two ultimately that were one in each of the middle schools, so we had four. And then depending upon if there was an issue in an elementary school, they would move back and forth to address whatever issue we had. So at one point, we had four positions, yes.
For a hundred and ninety thousand?
Correct.
And now we have two at a hundred and ninety thousand?
Correct, but, you know, with, you know, I want to be fair to the police chief, because he had to pull some resources back because of shortage of personnel at the police department level, the long period of time that it takes to get police officers hired, get through the academy, the whole situation. I can't speak to that specifically, but he had to pull some people back and added to have offices available on the streets. And so we, we worked with that, and most recently, he did add a new officer back that primarily focuses on the, the middle school, and we have an officer at the high school, so.
And I think that we were told we're not going to pay the whole hundred ninety this year.
Well, that's my question.
We don't know how much we're not paying.
Yeah, we don't know.
Is we should realize some savings in that.
Yeah, no, and I think we were told we're going to. I would prefer to have all the resource officers.
I would too.
I would do, exactly.
But because we didn't this year.
I just don't want that to just kind of, you know, be swept under the rug.
No, we, the.
Because that's, that's a para.
Because through the chair, I've, I've had very detailed conversations with the police chief. We're on the same page. I didn't like the fact that he had to pull some of the resources back, but we've been able to deal with it. But we are feeling the pinch, because there are, as Cody had indicated and Nona has indicated, there are some safety concerns, and the resource officers are very highly trained individuals. They handle those situations very well, and we appreciate the fact that we have those resources in the building, so.
It's going to be Ron, Wendy, and then Nona.
I'm just, I just want to piggyback on Cody and Wendy's question, and it's directed to Principal Lord. You know, when you're saying that the people that you've spoken to, they're willing to try, what benchmarks have you put out that would set up an early warning signal for you? And if you did tell us that it wasn't working, you would convey it?
Certainly.
To the superintendent, and what, and what you would hope, how to deal with that, correct?
We have discipline data that's being generated on a daily basis by the deans currently. I imagine those workflow protocols would continue, would move through the assistant principals' computer system rather than the dean's computer system, and using that data, we could do a comparative analysis between, you know, before and after kind of FX. But I think Cody is speaking to a much more important element, and that's the relationships that the deans establish with our kids. You can't really put a number on that.
That's where I was leading up to.
And the, the relationship the kids have with our deans is extraordinary. I've worked in several high schools in the last twenty-five years, and I have not seen relationships with troubled youth like I do with our deans. And that's really difficult to quantify. I couldn't bring a data set for you with that.
I'm not looking to quantify. I'm just saying that if all of a sudden you hit a speed bump and you could tell that it wasn't working, you'd have to come back to explain that, to tell the superintendent, and also to tell us.
Sadly, those relationships, however, would have been broken by that time, and it's very difficult to reestablish them. It takes many months, weeks, just, just daily discussions with kids. And, you know, it would be a bump in the road for sure, and it would take a while to climb back up. That's my, that's my professional judgment on working that particular issue.
Wendy, then Nona?
I just wanted to, because it was more on what Heather was saying, and please, Heather, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the, the problem or the question was that our expense for the, not, not a complaint towards the police department itself, that we were, that they were short-staffed and couldn't give us what we needed, but that our costs did not go down when their ability to staff the positions went down. And that is something I want to make sure stays, that we, we make sure that.
Yes.
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 Yeah. I have a couple of things. One, to stay with the school resource officers. If they're, if an incident has occurred here in the building and they've had to deal with it, lots of times they are called to court and they're tied up for the whole day in court or a half a day, which means they're not here in the building. So to count on them, I think, is almost foolish, to count on them being here to help offset deans not having, deans being let go. I don't see how hiring one assistant principal can take the place of three deans. Just can't see, I can understand that you want to have the other assistant principals to pick up work, and if that's the case, I'm wondering, how much work are they doing now?
Hey, I won't disagree with you, Nona. I mean, but if.
I mean, I think they're working. I think they're working hard, but you got to question that if you're saying they can pick up work with just an additional assistant principal. And I still, I, I have a tough time thinking that we're going to get rid of these deans and what it's going to cost. And I'd rather keep the deans, deal with maybe some higher class sizes, and know that we won't be faced with a safety issue, because boy, I would not want to see that happen if something happened to one of our students because we didn't have a dean.
I guess to me, it would be hard to sort of quantify if that is the reason, if anything were to happen.
No, I, I know, but.
And, I mean, I think everybody's very valuable, and we don't want to see anybody's position eliminated. However, we are going to be faced with a very tough choice, because we cannot, I think in good conscience, as much as we would all love to do the rollover budget, I don't think that that's something that is going to be perceived well or fly. So we do need to make some decisions, and so we are, you know, sort of weighing, you know, what's the lesser of two evils, because they're all bad, you know, nobody wants to see any of these happen. So, and I guess for me, if the administrators in the building are feeling that they would rather have a teacher in front of the classroom, which would with smaller class size, not that we're going to get smaller than what we have now, but that does keep behavioral issues, and it's much easier to be in control of your classroom when you have less students in it. And if they're feeling that that's the better way to go, then that's what I would want to support. Wendy?
Okay, so I, I have a question about, because Glenn said we haven't even touched the SPED stuff. So I, I would like to know what, what are, what shape we're in for the new coming year, because we had that issue. Maybe Ned could come address some of this, if you wouldn't mind. Because we, I mean, we know we had that issue at Samset with the life skills class that's on a DESI waiver in the media center. I mean, without touching any of the positions Ned's been asking for, for the, since I joined last year, what, what are we looking at and what are the expected, I mean, we could end up with, with violations. So what is the situation over at SPED, and what are you looking at for starting the year?
Okay. I'm going to try to keep it simple, but I have to overarching a few things first. There's a continuing conversation about Lemons Center for Excellence going on around this community. I don't know how many times I've been before this committee trying to explain the financial impact of LCE. You're probably sick and tired of hearing from me about this. But once again, I, I catch wind of an initiative to fund a citizen's petition to prohibit the school committee from using municipal funding for LCE. Let me be very clear with the committee and with the community. There's been debate over the past several weeks of who's going out of district, who's staying in district. Well, next year, I'm the out-of-district coordinator, because we all have to take on additional jobs. And we will be doing this job during the school day, and I'll be doing the other job at night or whenever. But I will be the person that the district empowers to make decisions about out-of-district placements. I'm telling you now that the day we cut LCE, there's a minimum of twenty-five students at my doorstep with their parents requesting a meeting. The meeting will be held, because it's the parents' and students' right. When this meeting is held, they're going to bring an advocate, they're going to bring a lawyer, a trusted friend, which they should and entitled to bring. And they're going to say to me, where is the structured therapeutic small setting that you're going to place my child at next year? And I'm not going to have an answer for them in district. So they're going out of district. The minimum amount that I'm going to be spending per placement, and that's if we get into a cheap placement, we won't go into the semantics of that, is sixty thousand dollars per student, times twenty-five, is one point five million dollars before transportation. Could someone please tell me how much we're spending for LCE right now?
Hundred and five?
Five million, five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand?
In that range.
Okay, last time I checked, it's going to cost more next year, just from a financial viewpoint. I'm done talking about financial viewpoint. Now I'm talking about core value. Every single committee meeting I come to, I hear a statement read that says, "We take care of the needs of each and every child." I'm sick and tired of having LCE pitted against everybody else and vice versa. Enough! Enough! We, and the worst part about this, this initiative is coming from one of our unions to vote on. They're pitting teacher against teacher! Enough! So, once and for all, for the committee and for the public, it's going to cost you more money if you get rid of LCE than if you keep it. Guaranteed.
Thank you.
Not done yet.
Could I just ask something about LCE?
Sure.
And we are planning on being able to have children tuition in, students' tuition in, so that would be offsetting some of the costs and making it more self-sufficient in the years to come.
And I, yes, and I didn't even reference the other students who do not have an ed plan. By the way, just as a clarification, there was a speaker right here at some point that talked about, well, how do I make special needs students at LCE? It is a small structured environment. There are consulting teachers, consulting people that come in that allow, the ed plan is written in a way that we can do that as a special ed placement, and we do that with other students in a district. So that's just a clarifying question, a clarifying statement. Okay, so the question is, is, you know, where do we stand? Not well, not good, okay? The superintendent asked me to prioritize some positions for you. The first priority is the special education coordinator that was taken out, being restored. And I'm going to go back to core values again, because the person that we were cutting, the position we're cutting, is our coordinator of therapeutic services. We talked about safety, talked about concern. I don't think there's a building principal, building assistant principal out there. I'm sure that majority of the staff would, would agree that our social-emotional needs of our students have become one of the focus of safety in our classrooms. I hear of the student who is being escorted out for hospitalization. I hear of the number of students who we have increased cutting issues. I see the number of younger and younger students that are being hospitalized for depression, whatever else you want to call for. My core value is this. I'm not cutting that position. I'm not. Until someone directs me to cut it. It's wrong. We cannot take away social-emotional learning that's going on in our classrooms if we have larger class sizes, if we have less teachers, if we have less deans. It's not going to work. We're going to have more emotional issues, so that's one. ABA tutors, I need a minimum of ten tutors next year, ten tutors, at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I need four parare educators just to cover anticipated one-to-ones. If I don't get those positions, what happens is that I have to shift other parare educators out of inclusion classrooms, so there will be no support except for the classroom teacher, which by law, regulatory-wise, we are able to do. Is it right? No. Do I worry about it all the time? Absolutely, because students aren't getting all the services they need. But legally, can it be done? Yes, it can be done in an inclusion classroom. Is it right? No. The next proposal at fifty-five thousand dollars apiece is to add one special education teacher to every school in our district. So that would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. We're not anticipating any early childhood add-ons at this particular moment. I may have to come back and ask for another one, because it's just too early in the game to figure out where we're going to sit for high-needs students. Our early intervention meetings are ongoing. We have a great relationship with them, but many times, students show up with severe needs at the last minute. So in order to put us into, into a, some sort of a shape, we're talking about six to seven hundred thousand dollars next year. And that's just the beginning. Any questions?
Sue?
I just want to make a comment. I thought you were very inappropriate to raise your voice.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. You had risen your voice above me at subcommittee meetings and at school, excuse me, at school committees, so I take offense to that.
You know, at point of order, this is not appropriate to be personally attacking anybody.
I, what, one comment.
She's, excuse me, she's continuing.
Please.
She's continuing.
Ned, please. Sue, you can speak, but you cannot be attacking Ned.
I'm not attacking Ned. I made a statement that I felt you were out of.
I took it as an attack.
But I also want to say, as a representative of this community, we are contacted on a daily basis by constituents. The issue with LCE in the public is that it was never presented appropriately to everyone. That school has changed from an alternative program similar to what was in Pittsburgh. Then it was changed to a bigger picture learning school, and now it's a different school, and the public needs answers. And I think a student did a presentation to us, the attendance is still out of line with what the guidelines are.
I disagree with all the statements you're making, Ms. Cola.
But I'm just trying to tell you where the negativity is coming from. You know, we're not upfront with this stuff, and then the, the building, the. And then the building, the rent of the new building, okay, what happened? How did we fund the difference, the double rent that we were paying? How was that done?
For a series of a few months.
You gotta be forthright. When you're spending taxpayer money, we have to be forthright in where that money's coming from and how it's going, whatever. So I'm just gonna say that because I'm telling you, I get calls, and I'm sure everybody else gets calls, about LCE.
And all I can say is that when a school committee member gets a call, they can certainly call my office. There are some members of the school committee that do that often, and there are some committee, many committee members I've never heard from.
Wendy?
I just wanna clarify something. It hasn't changed from big picture. It is still a big picture learning school. It has not changed from that. That is the model that we took on, was presented, and that is the model that they're using, and the principal is here, and she could address that, but it is still, it has not changed since it became a big picture learning school.
Okay, and we did vote.
And we did say it's communication.
Right, but we did vote on it becoming a big picture.
And it hasn't changed since.
But now there's a Rennie Center involved in it.
No, Rennie Center is.
And no one understands.
Okay, hold on.
What are you just adding to the confusion?
The Rennie Center is not, Carrie, can you explain what the Rennie Center is, please? Because it is not, it has nothing to do with the model of the school. But Carrie does work with them, and they have, they have given us major, you know, they have patted us on the back for the work we're doing at LCE, but they are not the model for a school. Can you explain what Rennie is?
Yes, the Rennie Center is a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization run largely out of Boston. They are both policy group, a research group, and a promoter of best practices for learning in the Commonwealth.
Do they charge us any money?
No, they do not.
Heather?
Just one quick question I would like you to clarify, because Sue mentioned that a student came up here and told us, talked to us about the attendance that it was, and I know that I've.
Our daily attendance average is 89%. We have a handful of heavy hitters on attendance, just like the high school has a handful of heavy hitters, the middle schools have handfuls of heavy hitters, elementary schools do. When you, when you spread that over, you know, 40 students, it hits your percentage in a bigger way. We would like to increase that, and we're doing that, we're doing everything we can. We have a school nurse who goes out and meets with families and makes behavior plans to help get kids to school. She texts with them, she texts with their parents, we do home visits, we're working very hard to keep these kids in school. One of the things that we do know is even for those kids who have a great deal of difficulty attending school, often their internship is the place where they have the highest rate of attendance.
Tona?
I just wanna clarify a little bit more about the Rennie Center. We work with the Rennie Center on the district capacity project, and they, because of that, they give us a grant that pays for the PRNs in each and every building.
No, the, yeah, just to clarify, the Rennie Center, we've been working with them since many years regarding the district capacity project. Most of the money when we first started was coming through the stimulus funds that were available from the federal government. We always paid a small portion of the amount, but it was through federal funding, and then the PRNs are essentially paid through Title II A, so.
And when you say PRNs, just for the public's.
Professional Resource Network teachers, which are teachers that, a new model of empowerment for teachers across the district, where we have content level teachers in early education in the elementary schools as well as in the middle schools, to support the overall staff of students in instructional practice and content area knowledge, so.
Cody?
I just wanna say a couple things. First of all, I agree with both Ned and Sue in the aspect that I do think that LCE hasn't been presented to the public in a manner in which they can fully understand it, and I understand that there's been changes, which adds to that difficulty. But I would also say that ultimately, that's our job as liaisons to the public. And I know we all get the calls, the emails, et cetera, and I can tell you I've answered, you know, endless emails about, you know, why I personally believe LCE to be important. But, you know, ultimately, maybe we have to be doing something more to outreach to the public and try and answer questions. Maybe we should talk about hosting some kind of Q and A with the public in the future, you know, particularly during budget season. Second point I wanted to make, you know, I've had the pleasure of working with Ned, and he is a very professional guy, and I don't think that he would be yelling unless he felt that he's been left no other option but to do that in order to express the urgency and the criticalness of the situation. We were out of compliance last year, along with this year. You know, and the majority of this committee voted against the net school spending budget last year based on the fact that we were out of compliance, that we are allowing our most vulnerable students to take the biggest hit during these years of budgetary struggle. And, you know, sometimes you do wanna yell, because it's, I don't know how else to get through to the public, into the city, that we are going to face consequences for being out of compliance with these rules. Serious consequences that could cost the district enormously. So, reach out to your representatives, reach out to us. If you have questions, contact us, but ultimately, please, take that message away, that unless we make this investment, there are going to be serious consequences to that.
And if I could just comment on that, because I do wanna make sure the committee is very clear. I don't raise my voice, but I'm getting frustrated. I'm getting frustrated with the fact that we have folks that are pitting teacher versus teacher. It happened today. Number two, that I know more than probably anybody else in this room, what's gonna happen at the beginning of next year if we don't fund the positions I'm talking to you about? I know that what's gonna happen is that I'm gonna come to you, I'm gonna say I'm gonna need these positions, and if you don't do a funding, if we don't have room in the budget, which doesn't seem like we're going to, you're gonna have to do a supplementary appropriation request to the city council. If that's not funded, then the superintendent and the cabinet are gonna have to cut teachers mid-year. So, yeah, I'm yelling about the people that we're gonna be cutting, and I'm yelling about the kids that were going to be losing services, losing their teacher mid-year. I'm yelling about the services that won't be done. Your principals and teachers and administrators in the building have held the PPS department together by a string. We can't do it anymore. So, yes, and I do apologize, I am frustrated. I'm frustrated sitting in meeting after meeting after meeting, knowing it's not the fault of this committee that we're sitting here, really. We're not funded by the state, we're not funded by the federal government, but we have to do it a different way now. We have to stand up and say, what is the core value we have here? And the core value needs to be the education of each and every child. If you're gonna say it at a meeting to start the meeting, you better mean it. And that's why I'm getting frustrated, because we don't have a lot more room to go. Thank you, folks.
The only thing that I would like to say is, I applaud passion, but I also need to make sure that people are respectful to one another, that this is a meeting and we do need to be professional and treat each other with respect. So having said that, it's Wendy, Ron, and then Heather.
I just wanna say that it is very frustrating to, because I get the same emails and phone calls asking questions about different things. I hear from a lot of sped parents, because we know each other, and I have children currently in sped place services, but about LCE, asking about the program. And Carrie's always very open and willing to have people come and see what they're doing, and talk to the students and find out what they're doing. But it's really disheartening to share this information with people over and over and over, on a heartfelt level, and explain, you know, and see them try to toss these 40 or so kids, saying that, you know, making them, saying that we're making them more important than the kids at the high school, when they're trying, you know, and then hear them say, well, we should close it, which then tosses these 40 kids without consideration. And these are people who are supposed to be caring about children. But the other thing is, I haven't heard any follow-up from anybody who's taken Carrie up on that offer and asked the questions, and spoke to the kids, and gone and visited. So I've stopped trying to play on the fact that we should be caring about these 40 kids as much as all of the other kids, and not make them expendable, and started focusing on the fact, the figures that Ned gave, where if only 25 of the 40 current, or so current students were placed out, how much more it would cost to give them what they needed, as opposed to just keeping the program open. And that doesn't seem to be getting through to people either, so I'm not really sure what the problem is then. If it's the size of the program, if it's the program, if it's the cost of the program, there's explanations for everything. So I'm really frustrated by the just toss-it mentality that I've been hearing.
You know, I just wanna respond very quickly. I am for the program, so.
I'm just saying, the public in general.
Before I say what I say, I don't wanna be misinterpreted at all, for the program. I think where other people get frustrated is if we eliminate athletics and we lose 30 kids to, you know, who wanna leave, we are jeopardizing, you know, where the perception is, we're pitting those children against these.
And we shouldn't be pitting children against children.
If we don't have AP classes, their perception is, if we keep this open and we lose AP teachers, now we're not providing a superior education to the children who do wanna be in a classroom and learn and take AP classes.
If I may.
That's where, that's where the perception problem is.
Right, and if I may, I'd like to have folks perhaps consider a different way to perceive this issue. I think that all of these kids are capable of succeeding when they're in the right environment and given the right supports. And I would encourage folks to look at our projected per pupil spending over the next five years. For FY '18, we are looking at being on par with the high school, and that includes our rent, and that includes our transport, you know, includes staffing, and it includes insurance, and, you know, all of the, it doesn't cost any more to educate a child at LCE than it does to educate them in this building. And I think every child deserves to be in a place where they can be successful, be that at 98 Adams Street, or be that over here. And every kid has got a, you know, that's why we're getting the attention from the state and from the Rennie Center, is that kids in Lemonster have an affordable choice, right? Everybody, we can afford to educate every child, especially if we do it thoughtfully and carefully and innovatively. And I understand your point, Kristin.
But you know, Wendy, I think at this point, you've had enough time. We're gonna move down to Ron. Ron, did you had your hand up before?
Yeah, I did. I, I, it is frustrating. It is very frustrating, because I hear, I get phone calls, I hear it out there, and it's frustrating, we're in the age of anger. And I agree with what my colleague here said, that, you know, maybe we haven't, I hate to use the word PR, we haven't done a good public relations for LCEI, LCEI, I'm saying the word the letters wrong.
LCE, yep.
But it is, it is a needed part of the school district. Unfortunately, there's always the scapegoats that end up being the piñata of the moment. If it's not LCEI, it's the PIC Center. Last week, I heard nothing, nothing good. Everyone was, it was talking about the PIC Center, what it's not doing, what is this and that and that. And it really infuriates me, because we got elected not to just be on TV and say, "Gumbaya", we have to make choices, and we have to present for it, we have to support the concept of having an education for the kids, and for the teachers, and for the constituents. And even if it means sometimes getting yelled at by people, you know, Ned was saying he gets frustrated, Sue was saying she was getting frustrated, but there's an element of anger, there's an element of sense of urgency. We have to make things work, sometimes against our will. There's no other way to do it. I know I've heard people out there telling me, what the heck is going on? Why are you spending money for this? Why are you doing this? And I try and explain them. You don't like it? Okay, but remember, not having an education is even more expensive. Whichever way you want, I'll stop. That's it.
Thank you, Ron. Sue?
I just wanted to say that, you know, piggyback off of Kristin's comment, you know, one of the things is, a proposal was made, we knew we were gonna have a tight budget year, we knew this a year ago, and one of the things was, when we knew the space was, we needed space to run LCE. And for the record, I support LCE. However, when we knew we needed space, it was brought to the table, why can't we look at coming back to the high school, making it a true alternative program, making it so that the kids could come back to the high school, do their internships during the day while the regular high school is in session, and then come after work, come after school hours to do their academic piece? And it was pretty much turned down. And I think also, a proposal was put on the table to go to Gallagher. Again, these are, you know, they're not optimal, but in terms of the program, if it is a therapeutic small group program, and we want kids to succeed, you know, I'm not sure location was a big issue or should have been made an issue.
May I make a point of order?
Unfortunately, and I, you know, I, I'm just gonna say that.
So, just two quick things. One, we weren't allowed to look at Gallagher. The mayor was very clear. They do have an education system up there, I guess that's a innovative something.
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit. So I'm not really sure why we couldn't use it, but I would ask you as school committee members to ask the mayor. Okay, that's one. I wouldn't have a problem with Gallagher, we'd have to do a lot of work, but I wouldn't have a problem. Number two, there's a difference between, and I understand what you're saying, Sue, in terms of, you know, offsetting, you know, sending the kids out during the day when all the kids are there, the other high school students then doing their thing. It's not gonna be optimal for every student. There's gonna have to be some internships that are at different times of their day. But one of the pressing pieces that we saw initially with LCE, when I was more involved in the day-to-day operation, was the fact that they couldn't go back to the high school. It was too large, it was causing a lot of anxiety, it was causing depression, it was causing emotional outbreaks for them. That's the point, is that if you look at the urban districts that have the alternative schools, typically, they're not in the high school. And if they get moved back to the high school, it's for one reason, and one reason only: money. And I'm just gonna say that as a committee, I hope that you will continue to support LCE being a small structured therapeutic environment, and for many of those students, it means not being at the high school. Not that the high school is bad, it's great for a lot of students, but for LCE students, for many of them, it's important to have a small structured therapeutic environment. Thank you.
So, at this point, I think we need to move on. We, as a committee, have fought really hard to establish an alternative school, and that took many years for us to do that. We're at a point where the school can now accept additional students from outside, which will generate some revenue, so I think that's important. But also, LCE has not been in any of our budget scenarios on the chopping block, so just to make that clear, that's not something that we've been presented with. So we need to move on and talk about some of these other things.
Just one final comment. Both Carrie and Ned talked about the social-emotional rationale for having that school. I'm a numbers guy, but based on review that I've done, if you close LCE, you have to eliminate all the additional positions you've added back. The 14 teachers, assistant principal, fully funding athletics and fully funding extracurricular stipends, that's all wiped off the board if you make the decision to close LCE.
Thank you. Can we continue with the budget for our installation?
Yep, I think through the chair, this is what I'm hearing, but you correct me if I'm wrong, but the priority budget seems to be meeting the needs of most of the committee members. We've talked about special education. Ned had given a range of 600,000 to 700,000. Ned had given a range of six hundred to seven hundred thousand, so if we compromise, it's six hundred and fifty thousand deans. If we add in, now, this is off of the reduction sheet, so I'm just working with the numbers that were originally on the reduction sheet. If we add back the high school, it was at two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, add back the middle school, a hundred and fifty-two thousand, we would have to add back health insurance by those five FTEs. That would be total four hundred and thirty-two thousand eight seventy-five. So between those two items, you're adding about one million eighty-two thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars to the budget, which would bring the, the priority budget plus, you know, option D, I guess, if you want to call it a fourth budget, up to seventy million nine ninety-six eight seventy-five. And my quick math is saying that that's a, from the one nine six six one fifty-three expenditures over net schools spending, it would go to three million oh forty-nine oh twenty-eight. And that's about a 4.24% increase. So that's what we, I think what I'm hearing is on the table now, but I don't know what the committee, how you want to proceed, so.
Sue, and then Cody.
So, I guess, Jim, again, it's, I feel it's your budget in terms of presenting us with the best scenario. And I, I'm kind of surprised that the special ed requests were not on this priority list. I, you know, we depend on you to give us what you feel everyone needs, so.
Well, when I was.
I mean, are we out of compliance if we don't fund those sped positions? Or are we, you know, because I don't think there would be a question. If we're out of compliance, we need to add it. But I, I think we're dependent on you to do that.
And I, and that's a, that's a fair comment. It's just that when we sat down to go over this, when we were looking at the numbers, what we were trying to do is there was a, and I had brought this to the finance subcommittee's chair attention when we were meeting last Tuesday. And that is, there was a comment that came from a student, actually, in some of the feedback that we received. And he said, "I understand that we have to, you know, make these reductions because of state funding, you know, municipal funding, whatever the case may be, but is, is there a way that we can at least meet in the middle?" So what we were trying to do was find a solution in this priority budget to meet in the middle. And we had also spoken about the school committee then in turn, looking at what our final recommendation was and making a decision primarily on the special education positions. So that's why I made it clear in all my notes that I provided you, was the fact that at this point, we hadn't added those positions in. But yes, if we don't add the positions in, same way, we didn't add the positions in, and by seventeen, we're going to run into compliance issues and we're going to have to address them during the course of the year. So either we go off of the same process of addressing them on an as-needed basis during the course of the year, or we allocate some funding somewhere in this budget proposal so that we have some money that we can work off of depending upon situations that come up.
I think it would be more prudent for us to be addressing those issues now than having to cut teachers mid-year or switch rooms or whatever, that just doesn't make any sense. So I would think that it would behoove us to address them while we're addressing the budget. Kristen, and then Wendy.
So, the number you just gave was how much?
Seventy.
Okay, with the deans and the special education funded at six hundred and fifty thousand would bring the total budget up to seventy, and I can see Glenn's double-checking my numbers here, so that's good, seventy thousand nine ninety-six eight seventy-five, I believe.
So how much more, I guess, over what, how much we're currently funded or net school spending or just whatever the baseline is, are we talking?
Three million forty-nine thousand twenty-eight dollars.
Okay, and then, we're, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm not getting it, Jim.
No.
You're adding six fifty to the one point nine?
No, I'm adding one million oh eighty-two because I'm adding in the deans, but I don't know.
But not to the budget with the vice principals, you're adding it to the net school spending budget.
I, I'm adding it to the priority budget, so.
But the priority budget already includes some of the deans transitioning into a vice principal.
Yeah, so we can take on the thousand.
So it wouldn't be quite that. But I guess I'm.
So my question more is, whatever number we're adding to the budget.
Yes.
We also need to, I'm just trying to mentally figure out, that doesn't include the eight hundred thousand we're asking for the transportation.
No, that's totally aside.
Yep, yep. And then, what about our deficit? Is that another one point five that we're going to ask to be covered from, or is that built into this?
The deficit for what?
For our current year.
Transportation?
Nope. We have about seven fifty in transportation, seven fifty in general fund.
Based on the presentation I've given you tonight, it's a little over nine hundred thousand. It's nine hundred and twenty-five thousand six fifty-three.
No, no, the deficit for, for this year, I thought was one point five.
Built into, if you're building it to next year's budget.
So it's, it's rolled into, so if we requested three million dollars more, that includes covering this year's one point five, or we need to ask for another one point five?
I don't follow what you said.
We have a current deficit of one point five million for seventeen?
Approximately.
So we're going to ask the, for three million, if we're using whatever number we just came up with, say three million dollars more for priority budget, and we're going to ask for eight hundred thousand dollars more about for transportation. Do we need to ask for another one point five to cover our current deficit, or is that built into the three million?
It's built in.
Okay. My next question is, do we have, I think it's very hard for any of us to make a decision on this without the contract information for both the custodians and the IT. And I know that timing is difficult for you to come up with all of that. So there's, there's no criticism in that. I'm just curious, this, I don't know how we'll make a decision without it, and I know you're working fast.
We've made really good progress on the custodial outsourcing. But right now, I think that if we're going to get into more details with that, we have to, because it's so tied into union contracts and all that, we'll have to do that separately.
An executive session?
Yes.
And was the executive session posted for today?
No, it is not.
And was it posted for tomorrow?
No, it was not.
Okay, so I guess I'll just hold, I'll just keep thinking about that one. And again, I want to thank you for coming up with these three budgets. I sat with Glenn and took his time on Friday afternoon, so thank you for putting up with me while you worked at the same time. I appreciate that. And I know that we came up with three different budgets, but just like we added a few things, I think, to them, the one thing that I'm hoping we can see or do is, I don't see us trying to trim anywhere. You know, I, I say like, there are things, I think, in our budget that are nice to haves, and they're probably nice to haves in the way that we really, really need them, but I would rather see athletics stay and trim the athletic budget, you know, not necessarily ask for it to be level-funded, but try to put as much back as we could. Same thing with the extracurriculars, maybe work on increasing a user fee for everybody, you know, across the board. Not only, we already approved one increase in athletics, could maybe edge it up a little bit more, but also, you know, work in.
We don't have user fees for.
And add those.
Whether it's choral or band or the drama or.
And every, I know that they fundraise.
Clubs.
Everybody fundraises, I mean, I get that. But I'd rather see us try to come up with some of those creative solutions than just say, you know, it's all or nothing. And I think it's important that we send the message, just like with, you know, with what Ned was saying, you know, I think that there are many students who are looking for us to say whether the extracurriculars and the sports at the high school are in or out before they start looking and leave. It would only take us losing twenty-two students for every gain that we just made to be lost. So I think, you know, we need to make sure that we send a good message, either way, so they know what to do and we can fully prepare us for enrollment to be down again next year, which really is the cause of this problem. You know, we're down a hundred students and otherwise our budget would be up two percent. So that plays a big part in what's going on here. So my question for Jim and Glenn is, without the data person, because that was one person whose position we could be eliminating, who, I mean, I assume a data person has to do with the reporting of the numbers. Is that a different type of data? Who's reporting our numbers? How do we make sure we are capturing every single person we need to next year without a data person?
No, we still have one person that we're doing that.
And plus, that work is primarily done in the parent information center now. They handle all of, of the economically disadvantaged free and reduced lunch as well as school choice.
Okay. So I don't know if, you know, there's some way that we can come up with some type of list. I've only heard great things about, where's Ned, the website, what websites we use for mental health?
Interfaith.
Interfaith, thank you. I've only heard great things about it. But I signed a warrant that it was fifteen thousand dollars. So is that something that we really, it'd be great to have it, but that could save, you know, some type of an aid? You know, I think that we need to look at our expenditures now and see what we can trim, and maybe we don't go to the school committee convention and see what we save that way. I think it's things like that that we really need to look at and try to save as much as we can. And the last thing is, Jim, I want to make sure that when, if we can add positions back in, that we do it in a fair and equitable way. You said like the schools can take someone and, you know, add them back if they need them. But what I don't want to see is, you know, we had Johnny Appleseed without the School Adjustment Council for a long time, he wanted to make them even. I hate to see Samadhad have a dean and Sky do not have a dean, you know, and I know that the principals have a lot of latitude to do what they want to do.
Although I would think that, you know, the principals who are running the building should know where their priorities are, and I would, you know, sort of.
But I want to make sure that any student in our district can go anywhere and know that they're getting the same type of service, so.
Right, but whether there's a dean or a Spanish te, or whatever, English teacher or third grade teacher, I think is really up to the building principals because they know what the population is and what the needs are.
Right now, though, I'll tell you, Francis Drake has a terrible inequity going on where they're not, they, they don't have the same, because of the demographics of the school, they don't have the same opportunity the other schools do. And we're, you know, we're focused on this and I think, well, that is very important, this is more important, but we need to make sure that we're keeping things fair and equitable.
I would also, you know, I mean, again, obviously I don't want to see any position cut, but ultimately, we can't sustain, you know, our current level of operation.
No, yep.
So we can't. So I guess, you know, if I'm hearing things correctly, if the building administrators, although they would love to keep the deans, are feeling that's one position that they could do without, and we have a special ed teacher that will put us in compliance, to me, that would be the better use, you know, of that money, not that I want to see any deans.
And maybe for next year, you're right.
But I do want.
It's our job to make sure everything's fair and equitable across the district, though.
But we also need to have.
Take care of our needs.
Meet the, meet the law and have the special ed teachers. So to me, that would be a priority because we have to be in compliance. And that would, to me, would make more sense.
I just want to say one more thing. I'm actually kind of shocked that I have to say this, but, you know, no one up here wants to make any cuts. I think we all want to add things to our budget. But this is our job, and, you know, I think people were criticized for saying that they don't want to make choices. None of us really want to, but we have to. But I am appalled to say that some of the professionals that we're trying to save the jobs for have directly said things to my children in the buildings that are completely inappropriate. And it just saddens me that that's what this is reduced to, because our children have nothing to do with this. And I guarantee you, not one of us up here want to make any decision that impacts anyone negatively. And it's just too bad that we are not working in a more collaborative spirit amongst the entire city to get this done.
I'm going to agree with what Kristen said at the beginning. I think we really need to look at other, other places. I, you know, I, I had asked for if we could get a list of stipends that are being paid that are not athletic or extracurricular, and if that is someplace that we could make some cuts at. I think there's other programs that we can do a better job on, can tweak it, tweak them a bit to save some money. And, you know, I think we need to see exactly, I'd like to see some figures on exactly what the outsourcing would be, the cost of the outsourcing versus saving those IT positions, those custodial positions. And, and to negotiate with them to see if they're willing to work with us on, you know.
Whether it's furloughs or not taking their negotiated raise or something.
Something like that.
And I would like to see that expanded to actually all the unions.
And I think, I think we need to see what kind of.
Help the entire school system.
What kind of, you know, if, if outsourcing of IT, what is the group that would be the outsourced program? What are they willing to do? Because I know, you know, the high school starts at seven in the morning. If they come in and, and you can't get on the computers, who are they going to call? I mean, we call our own in-house people right now to come and deal with it. And they're very good about solving the issue right away. And if we outsource, are we going to have that same type of service?
Is there any specific points, Glenn, that we have missed in the budget presentation?
Based on adding back the deans, adding six hundred thousand dollars to sped, what was the third item, superintendent? Eliminating the assistant.
The only other two items that came up was the FY seventeen deficit and then the transportation factor for the city.
Based on, based on your explanation of adding back the deans, eliminating the assistant principal, you're adding the dean, three deans or five deans?
It would be five, I presume. I'm not speaking for the committee.
Well, even, again, even if we could add back two at the high school and, you know, one at each, I don't think it has to be an all or nothing. I think we all know we need to trim a little bit, so.
Yeah, so what if we did two of the three? I mean, I don't, I mean, I guess I feel that if we were prioritizing, that I have priorities elsewhere than strictly the deans. And whether we need some of the deans, but I don't necessarily know that we need all the deans. Because I'm taking it from the administration saying that this is a place where we can trim. And to me, teachers in front of the classroom or the special ed are a priority compared to the deans. And not that I want to see any dean positions, you know, cut, but at some point, we need to make some cuts. I also think programs, whether it's like K-12 inside or some other kinds of programs, you know, it's maybe small amounts here and there, but it does add up. So that if we can trim things off of stuff like that that don't impact positions, then that would be my first choice as well.
I agree, I agree with you, Eileen. I think the administration made the recommendations, other than not including the sped positions, which would put us in compliance. I feel the same way. And we heard the superintendent say that it's up to the building leadership, whether they could do with the deans or without the deans. So I, I agree with you. I'd rather put the money where the class is, you know, in front of the students.
Can I ask a question? So I know you have in your, in the budget for C, the scenario C budget, you add in one assistant principal. But what if they, instead of an assistant principal, they decided that, that they wanted it to be a dean's? I mean, I don't, I guess I don't understand.
Yeah, we were just trying to provide the committee with an option for, rather than replacing all, all the deans.
Right.
Providing them with another option, but if that's not the way we want to go, then that's fine.
Jim, just to piggyback, so, an assistant principal can do a lot of what a dean does, but they're also able to help with the evaluation?
Evaluations.
Right.
So that's the key, right?
But it's very key.
That's the key.
Because if you're going to have assistant principals pick up responsibilities elsewhere, then the Eddie Bell work will fall behind, and that's a regulatory issue, so we can't allow that to fall behind either, so.
Do job descriptions have, I mean, can you make the job description? Do job descriptions have, I mean, can you make the job description of an assistant principal to look a lot like what a dean would do? Or are you tied by a job description that's...
Well, assistant principal is within unit B, so we'd have to work with unit B to assess.
And what is it, Dean?
And are deans, just in general, is it a lateral move or it would be a promotion? Like, is a dean qualified to be a vice principal? Or it's a different...
Well, it's licensure.
So, it would be a licensure requirements of who knows what the deans currently have?
Right.
Gotcha. Are there other program, medical kinds of, not that anybody wants to cut anything, but are there other program kinds of things that we could trim as opposed to staffing? Glenn?
In the proposal presented to you on May twenty-second, we talked about reducing classroom instructional supplies by twenty percent. We're already reducing that by twenty percent.
And that was in our original budget, correct?
So, if I may, if I may, part of what I believe the mayor and city council are going to look at is, what are you asking for as a percent above net school spending? And we know that historically, you've been budgeted at about net school spending. The average across the state is twenty-three point seven percent above net school spending. We're never saying we're going to get there. We're not even asking for five point eight one percent. But based on what you've discussed tonight, if you approve the priority budget, add back two deans at the high school, add back the six hundred thousand dollars for sped, you come up with about nine hundred and ten thousand dollars additional. If you were to approve a request at four percent above net school spending, you get, would cost you nine hundred six thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars. And you can leave it upon the superintendent and his cabinet to come up and find out the additional reductions. But the question is, do you feel comfortable going to that amount? Another point I'd like to make is, I was once in a very contentious situation between a town council and a school committee. And after hours of deliberation, everyone felt beaten up. And someone said, "I think we've reached consensus." And everyone's like, "What? What?" Oh, consensus is not that everyone walks out of the room happy. It's that everyone walks out of the room equally unhappy, but you can live with it. So, just a suggestion, if you want to vote tonight, four percent, I think the superintendent and his cabinet can make that work.
Do we, would we need a dollar amount for that four percent? Or could we do it as a percent?
An actual number.
So, what would that be?
Seventy million, eight hundred ninety-six thousand dollars.
Seven, eight, nine, six.
Seven, zero, eight, nine, six.
I wrote it.
Zero, zero, zero.
Can you repeat it once more? Seventy...
Eight ninety-six.
Excuse me, seventy million, I write in so many notes here. So, add nine hundred six thousand five hundred twenty-one dollars. Let's get it exact. Nine, o, six, five...
I have seventy-eight ninety-six eight seventy-five.
And round it off.
Seventy million, eight ninety-six eight seventy-five.
Yeah, that's what I got, too.
Okay, so, so it would have to be the dollar amount, not the percent, so...
Which is four percent.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Which is four percent above net school spending.
I was just clarifying if we needed both, if we needed the percent was enough or if we needed an actual dollar amount.
We need a dollar.
We need a dollar figure.
So, could I make a motion for that, then?
You certainly can make a motion, and then we can discuss it.
Okay, so I would like to make a motion that we put forward a budget of seventy million, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second? Discussion?
So, I guess, when would we see a line item budget based on that? I know we've got a lot of the generals, you know, here, just so we can...
Yeah, I think most of them are here, so we can...
Just to clink, I have too many notes everywhere to know what I'm talking about now.
We can pull it together.
By the end of, by Friday.
I mean, and what about trimming costs? How do we, can we capture where we can trim?
Is that a meeting that, is that something that we can sit? I mean, after this is done, we can sit as a finance committee again, right? And kind of go over that?
Well, we definitely can, you know, much the way we did last week, and, you know, bring up our ideas and see what the administration says. But, you know, I don't know if we should be driving that or they should be, you know, if we should hear what they have to say. I think we kind of both need to do it independently and then meet in the middle, but we need their input. And I think I know, I'm not saying you have a ton of money to cut them. I mean, I know it's lean and I know it's tight. It's just, you know, we heard time and time again about K-12 insight, and even if it's ten grand, it's ten grand, you know, and I know you're...
That saves, you know, whatever, however many coaches or how many extra clubs or...
And I'd love to fully fund athletics because I think they've taken a hit every year, you know, with their rising costs, and we've kept them, you know, we've actually messed with their budget a ton just through, you know, whatever reason. But, you know, if everyone has to take a hit, everyone has to take a hit. And I'd rather see something saved than everything lost.
I still would like to challenge, you know, sort of the staff to pull together and, you know, figure out what they can do to support, you know, our budget and keep staff employed. And that may mean tightening the belts, and I know that nobody wants to do that, and everybody's under financial stress. But, you know, it's probably the most equitable way to support, you know, the budget if we don't get what we want to get. You know, ideally, we would be voting for, you know, everything that we could sustain. But we have to make some cuts, and it would make cuts more palatable for the students ultimately. And hopefully save some jobs. So, I would just like to throw that out there and for us to continue to see if we can negotiate something, and we might not be able to, but, you know, if it saves a position or two, it's worth it.
We should ask.
We should ask.
Well, we've already asked. It's in process. It's just that you're not going to get, when we had three days last week, you're not going to get responses the next day, so...
Sue, then, Wendy?
Okay, so, we have a meeting tomorrow night?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so, can I ask that we get this proposal updated to reflect what we talked about tonight, which was adding six hundred fifty thousand back to the priority budget to meet the sped requirements?
Right, and have it itemized so everybody knows what it's for.
Right, exactly. But also, I heard Glenn say to add deans back. I heard Jim say or ask the principal. And again, I sense, you know, a little friction there in terms of if the administrator said he can do without the deans and would prefer an assistant principal, so be it. Which is what Eileen keeps saying, and I kind of agree with that. I think we want the money spent in the classroom. So, if you could put together, you know, the additional things we just discussed tonight, and then, I mean, is it safe to say that we're looking at that C as what we would pass? So, we could just focus on that?
Right. So, I mean, at this point, we have a motion and a second. So, at some point, either we need to vote on that today, or we could ask to table it or withdraw the motion for the discussion tomorrow.
I guess, how do we vote without knowing the benefit of the two, you know, outsourcing contracts? Because if they don't work, then that changes a lot of things. And we haven't had a chance to evaluate those. So, I'm not trying to hold up a vote. I just don't know logistically how all that works because that could impact us by another million dollars one way or another way. I mean, what, like, if we had to go through procurement or some, I mean, I don't know all the rules about...
We can discuss this in executive session.
Right, so we need to schedule an executive session, a meeting with executive session.
So, can we vote before, I don't know if I feel comfortable voting before then.
Can you suspend the rules tomorrow night at an executive session?
Yeah, I think we need to vote on it, set a benchmark and get goals. We can't dawdle anymore. No more dawdling. Let's get it done.
I don't want to dawdle. I just don't want to have to deal with a million dollar difference. You know, we have to cut more things we didn't anticipate because what we just voted on wasn't what we thought.
Nona?
I would recommend tabling the vote until at least tomorrow, where we can get some figures on the four percent increase, on how that looks with the addition for the special ed. I think we do need to see some type of figures.
We don't have enough time to, do we still need the forty-eight hours to post for an executive session? Glenn?
And I don't know how strictly you follow Robert's rules, but can't the board decide to add an executive session and suspend the rules?
I think it all has to do with the public. I'm not sure that we can do that.
That's not the public.
I got Robert's rules here. Anybody want to read it?
Could you look it up, Ron?
Look it up, Ron.
Look it up, Ron.
Well, I'm not very good with my English. Since you're the chairman, I'll allow you to glean through it.
Light reading.
Read it till about five in the morning.
I think it will take three seconds to put together the transportation sheet with the four numbers.
It may take ten seconds.
Ten seconds.
So, we're going to, can I have a motion to recess while we explore whether we can go into executive session?
I'll make a motion for a brief recess.
And could I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to take a brief recess so we can deliberate whether we can go into executive session legally. The Lamont School Committee back in session. After our short recess, we have decided that we are able to make a motion to go into executive session. We do not need to have it posted previously. So...
Can I just ask, can we just remember that?
Sue and Cody looked it up online.
The State Attorney General's Office laid out guidelines, the normal procedure procedures for executive session. It has absolutely no mention on the website about a public notice in advance of the executive session, so...
Is everyone feeling comfortable with that ruling? Yep. So, can I, so, do, would we like to, if people would like to go into an executive session now, I need a motion, and we would then need to clear the room?
We have a motion on the table already.
You're absolutely right. So, we need somebody to withdraw. Who made the motion?
I, I did.
You would need to withdraw your motion. Thank you, superintendent, for reminding me.
Okay, so, I'll withdraw the motion until after executive session.
I just have a question. Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, if we, after executive session, if we want to re-submit the motion, we can do that, right?
Right. We're just withdrawing it at this point, so we're not taking any action on it.
So, we'll be returning after executive session?
Yes. So, I need somebody to make a motion to go into executive session under chapter thirty-nine to discuss contract negotiations, and we will be returning. So, if someone would like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Ron. Do I have a second? And then it'll be a voice call vote. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Voice call vote, starting with Ron?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay?
Yay.
Yay.
Okay, so, at this time, we'd like everyone to please exit the apple seeds so we can conduct executive session, and we will be returning.
You have to stay in the hallway. No way!
And baseball won yesterday, and they're going as well.
James Carr's got his glove back.
Yes, he did, and hit a two-run homerun.
Hit a two-run homerun.
All good.
I couldn't announce that. We had a motion on the table.
Sorry.
Anyone deserves it, he does.
The school committee meeting at this time, we've exited executive session, and we're back into regular opens, or regular meeting.
So, now I would need to remake my motion.
And so, now...
Right?
We, yes. Kristen, did you have something before?
Are we back in regular session?
We're back in regular session.
So, Jim, no matter what we end up voting on, is it possible that what goes forward to the mayor includes the, all the scenarios?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. They typically, the mayor doesn't like a line item budget, but we'll put the whole package together, make sure that he knows everything that the, that the school committee has deliberated on, as well as the final number.
And I don't think, I didn't mean the line items so much as like the A, B, C, D...
Oh, no, that's fine, yeah. We'll summarize all that. That's not a problem.
And what we put into our priority budget.
Yeah, yeah.
So, then I would like to, again, make a motion on a seventy million, eight hundred ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollar budget, which is the four percent that we talked about.
I'll second. Discussion? Sue?
Again, I'm not going to support it only because I need to see it on paper. I really think, you know, it's, again, we spoke about adding six fifty in sped money, but then we heard different scenarios on the deans, so I, I won't support it unless it's on paper.
We do have a meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
So, it is, you know, just another suggestion that we could vote tomorrow as well.
Yeah, I'd like to table the vote till tomorrow, when we can see it on, in writing.
Well, what is it, any other thoughts about it? Because we do have a motion and a second. You're looking at, Wendy, you need to make your own decision.
Oh, I've already made my decision. I totally want to vote right now. I'm tired of just...
You know, we can always, you know, the thing you have to remember, whoever doesn't vote against, whoever votes against it can always ask to bring it back tomorrow. I say, vote on it today, and then we can come back tomorrow and decide, and decide to bring it back and vote on it.
Well, but if it carries today, then we don't get the opportunity.
But even if it carries today, the one who voted against it can bring it back. That's part of Robert's rules of order.
I don't think Sue's saying she's against the number. I think she's just saying that we need the documentation to be able to vote on it. And I'd like the transportation sheet also.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I don't mean to put words in your mouth, but...
I probably would vote for it, but I still would like to see it spelled out.
Well, I don't think it's responsible to vote on something that's not documented. Seriously, here we are, you know, seventy million dollar budget, and we have nothing in front of us to support the numbers. I think that's irresponsible.
So, my thought is, we have it in front of us that says that this priority budget is sixty-nine million dollars. We have a request for six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for sped, and we are talking about bringing back four deans. I heard two at the high school and two at the middle schools. So, that's what I'm, I mean, I could write it on a piece of paper, and then it's written down. I mean, to me, I guess maybe I just see things differently, but I know exactly what I'm voting for, and that's how.
So, I think that we've heard conflicting things about the deans. You heard the business manager say one thing. I heard something else from the principal, which is why I asked the administration, what are their priorities? They didn't put the deans in. They had recommended an assistant principal. So, that's what I'm...
Lily, Cody?
I think the point of, you know, adding on top of the priority budget was based off of some of the priorities that we discussed tonight.
Yes.
And I can absolutely understand, you know, not wanting to vote on it without numbers. At the same time, I feel that, you know, it is urgent, and, you know, I think we owe it to the people to try and get as much money into this budget as we can.
Right, and I think, though, we have a meeting tomorrow, so I think if we were waiting weeks or something like that, it might be a different story, but we're all going to be here tomorrow. And if we have everything very clear, I think, I mean, I'm in favor of this amount of money. I'm not exactly sure where it's specifically going to, but I certainly have advocated throughout the meeting to try to keep as much staff here as possible and to try to keep as much teachers in front of the students and meet our mandates, so we're not out of compliance. But, so I want that sort of reflected, but I'm fine with, you know, sort of the number as well. So, I think we're all sort of in the same place, but just how we get there.
So, I think also, you know, I just want to double check because I... because I thought it was 600 that we said for sped, but the six or 650, but the two deans that we're, that we included, the conflicting information is that Dr. Lord said they can, they can do it with the addition of the assistant principal, but there was some feeling amongst some of us that the deans were a better option. If we put that in there, we have to leave it to them to then decide if that is the better option. We're giving them now the chance to bring that back.
But it would be a different amount of money.
No, but I mean, we're putting the two deans in there because that was, I think what they were saying is that they could do it without. Not that they preferred to do it without.
But you only had one person here. We didn't hear from all the principals.
Oh, you mean like from the middle schools, right.
Right, so I'm not so sure that that's, you know, sort of across, you know, the board.
Right, but I, I just mean that we, we didn't, Kristen didn't tell us that he didn't want his deans. He just said that if we couldn't give them to him, he could, they had this backup plan. But they, I don't think, I heard him say he didn't, that they didn't need them or want them, but that they could make do without it. Right, but we, and we did, and that was part of the number. We added the two deans. But I don't think it was a conflict on if they wanted or needed them. It was that if they couldn't have them, they, this was their, their go-around.
Right, I mean, I think ideally, everybody wants everything. And so, but that's not going to happen. So I guess I would want to be really clear. And right now, you just said, was it 600 or 650,000?
I have 650,000.
Right, but we do need to be very clear, so which...
Just asking to check on the math.
Right, but that just supports it being in writing, so we're very clear exactly what we're voting on.
Okay, to the chair, if I could just ask one question for guidance here because if, if you are restoring four dean positions and I go to administration and say, "What do you want to do?", what, what's the answer going to be?
Right, so I don't think we're restoring four dean positions.
I think what we're saying is there's four positions. Is it, is it Dr. Lord saying he'd prefer an assistant principal? Because that was on your priority list.
Yep.
Is it a dean and an assistant principal?
Or is it a special ed teacher?
Yeah.
Or is it something else?
Do the middle schools want their deans back or another teacher? So I think that's, that's just what we're looking for, I think.
Okay, thank you. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Ron.
Nope, nope, no problem. My, my little contribution to this is as follows. One, when we vote on this, make it a living document so we can revisit it at will. And then if you want it, if you want it on paper and written down, then have Chris, and send an email to all of us.
Well, no, because we don't know...
And then it's there. And then we can vote on the numbers. It's as simple as that.
So it is, it is a number, but we don't know exactly what positions we're voting for. That's the, that's, I think, the problem. Cody?
Since it appears the committee's pretty evenly divided on this, I'm just going to say, you know, I understand the numbers argument and I have no problem with waiting till tomorrow to table it.
So at this point, I have no problem tabling it either. I think, you know, we have a motion and a second. Either we need to call the, call the motion and vote or the person who made the motion can table it until tomorrow.
I'm not sure what's going to be different tomorrow. It is going to be the same number?
Right, but we'll have, I think, a delineation of what we're voting on specifically. I think that's the only difference.
Apparently, I'm outnumbered here.
I, no, because I'm gonna, everything's going to be on a piece of paper tomorrow and it's going to be the same number and he's going to have it all broken down by position and we'll make a motion again and it'll be seconded and we'll vote on it.
Okay.
Are you, from, are you withdrawing your motion?
Yeah, I'll table the motion till tomorrow.
And just for the record, you know, we threw out a number of 650,000. I don't even know what that means. Is that insurance?
No, we'll get the detail.
Well, that's exactly right. It, it might end up being more because that doesn't include health insurance. It might include less. And I don't know if anybody knows that. So I think it's irresponsible to approve a number. You know, if we're trying to defend what we're recommending for a budget, we need to have everything itemized. We need to know ourselves what we're, what we're approving.
And I think that it's, seems like without a vote that, you know, people out of the three budgets are supporting the prioritized budget and some increased money into that pot. So I don't think we're far off.
So I've said a couple of things. So you're okay with the transportation sheet? And, because I'd like to be able to vote on that as well. And I know it gives you very little time, but I still think we need to show where we've trimmed our expenses where we can. So if, if that's at all possible to do for tomorrow, that would be my preference.
Did we cut classroom supplies by 20% at every school?
I don't, I don't think we're talking about classroom supplies necessarily. I think we're talking about things like K-12 insight and other kinds of things like that.
Stuff that should have been talked about before tonight.
Well, it was on the table before tonight.
It was.
It has been on the table, but it's been ignored.
To the chair, I dispute that statement. I'm not going to listen to that.
They haven't been brought forth. How's that?
The dollars that were requested...
I'm not going to listen to that dribble. That is not true. And I'm not going to listen to things being said that are not true. I ask you to retract your statement because I know it's been brought up. I've been going to the finance meetings and I'm not part of the finance committee because I'm too young or too old, but I know we've heard it.
Okay, Ron, we appreciate your feedback. Sue?
I just wanted to say that a list was provided to the superintendent requesting dollars associated with prospective cuts. And I never saw a sheet. I know the other night at that meeting, we were all sitting there writing things down, whatever was given to us. I never saw a sheet that said how much we would save on any of those cuts.
Right, and if they were endorsed. I mean, some of them I think weren't possible and that's, that's fine. Yeah, so it's just a matter of where we could trim where we can to do our part and...
And I do want to acknowledge that the superintendent and Glenn and the rest of the administration certainly have painstakingly gone over, you know, numerous cuts. And so I don't want to be remiss. Right, because they certainly have done a lot of due diligence.
Absolutely.
And we just want to see if there's, again, any other place that we can potentially save money as opposed to, so we can save positions. And, you know, I know, not that I expect anybody necessarily to do this, but, you know, I think, you know, if people even forewent, you know, the next, you know, raise, that would be like a $2 million savings. There's all kinds of, and, you know, personally, people probably can't do that. But, you know, if people could, you know, that would be a solution for us keeping programs and, more importantly, keeping staff and servicing our children. So, you know, there's, you know, if there's wiggle room out there, please let us know. If there isn't, there isn't. But I think, you know, at this point, we are running out of time and we do need to vote and hopefully we can vote on a budget tomorrow. Anyway, yep.
One more thing. So just to recap everything tonight. So Jim, we're going to see tomorrow this scenario again, the priority budget revised based on what we've discussed. Okay, we're going to see a transportation, proposed transportation budget with what we want to request from the city.
Yes.
We still have to talk about the 2017 transportation, how we're going to pay for that, the deficit of...
I think that was rolled in, wasn't it?
No, 727,000.
No, we talked about making a motion.
We didn't make a motion.
But we didn't.
But wait, I, I think I asked if the 1.5 deficit from this year was in next year's budget and you said it was. Yeah? No?
Glenn said yes, I thought.
Yeah, he did. So I guess then my concern, then we definitely need to see numbers because if we need to add another 1.5 million on top of the...
No, 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 you said it did not, it was not, right?
No, it's not.
No.
But you're both saying different things, so I guess it's late.